Well, I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting of December 15th to order. We have a quorum.
It is 6:34 PM.
It is 6:34 PM. I did not have to notate that. Do I also have to notate who's on? So we've got John Jones, Kent is on, Michael Lovell, Melinda is on. Is that everyone? And then I, Kelly Cates, I'm here.
And so we're just missing?
First things first, we'll need a motion to allow Vice Chair Kelly to preside over the meeting.
And if not, good luck, kids.
I move to let, I move for that. Yes, to let Kelly, the Vice Chair, preside over the meeting.
So I moved, okay. So we need a seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike. And Mark has joined the meeting now.
All right, Mark is on.
Mm-hmm.
The President now apologizes, people, folks.
You're fine. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so am I approved to continue?
You are.
All right, thank you, sir.
Wait, was there a vote?
Yes.
Oh wait, there needs to be a vote.
Oh, there needs to be a vote, that's right. God. Austin, come on, man.
Yeah, stop with my game. Okay, so further discussion?
Any further discussion? Nope.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Okay.
It's unanimous?
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on. All right, now we're moving on to adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or changes? Damn, I just broke my pen. No comments or changes?
I do not.
Rohit, are you good?
Yes, I'm good.
All right, so could someone make a motion to adopt the agenda? John Jones raising his hand to make a motion.
Seconded the motion.
Any comments?
Who was it?
John Jones made the motion, Mark Peterson seconded. All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you. Next, did everyone have a chance to look at the meeting minutes from 11:17? All right, any changes or comments on Austin's note-taking? Any judgments? No? Okay. Could I get a motion to adopt the meeting minutes for November 17th?
So moved.
Seconded. Melinda seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? And moving on.
And you can sign these later.
Okay, thanks. Is there anyone online that, how do you do public comment online? I'll go look at this.
You just ask if anybody would like to see, they have three minutes.
Okay. Anyone signed up over there? Probably not.
Nope, no, there's nobody. So that's an easy job on our end.
Anyone who's joining us on WebEx, if you have any public comments, would you please speak up and let us know that you want to say something? And if you do, you've got three minutes in front of the Planning Board.
To clarify, if you are in attendance because you have an item on the agenda, duh, this is not the time. This is just for any general public comments.
All right.
You're good?
Moving on.
Mm-hmm.
All right, discussion of Marvin Gardens' welcome signage.
All right, so I've put this item as, basically, I think, the developer, Asa Harris, is in WebEx audience, and he'll basically be presenting this. But I'll just give a short introduction where this is a concept. So this is a, basically, like a pre-application meeting to pitch the idea that in front of the Publix, in the very front of the development at the corner of Newtown and Providence, there's an idea that we would have a sort of a sign that would say, Publix welcomes you to Village Marvin, you know, because we can kind of improve this branding and kind of let people know that they're in Marvin. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll ask Austin if you could, if you could screen share the schematic so that everyone on, everyone who's viewing can see it too.
Oh, I need to pull, let me pull up the packet really fast, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem. In the meantime, I did put Asa as the speaker, so he can, I guess he can go ahead and speak.
Fantastic. Thanks Rohit. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic. Well, good evening, everyone. Appreciate the introduction, Rohit, and all your assistance throughout the process of getting the Marvin Gardens development completed over there. We were really excited to get it opened about two months ago. And right before, actually, it was the day prior to opening, some of the members of council came by to take a tour along with Rohit, and we had a bit of folks from Publix there as well. And one of the topics of conversation that came up was, everyone was really happy with the appearance of the development, the overall aesthetics, and we've heard a lot of good feedback, the people that were pleased with how it turned out. But one thing that came up was the fact that, you know, it kind of lacks of a presence from the intersection. Also, you know, the fact that, you know, the development home diagonally across the intersection is not in the Village of Marvin, and obviously this development is, you know, it's kind of a key differentiator. Now, eventually, the outparcels are going to be developed, and that corner, right on top of where that pond wall is, actually is designated for, I believe what was notated in the original zoning is a signature building. But in discussions, we started batting around, is there something we could do at the intersection to bring more presence at the intersection and introduce the overall development, also to notate that it's in Marvin? And the idea of a gateway sign was developed. Based on that, we developed the concept, if you could go to the, so this is, what you see on screen currently is the intersection, and obviously, our development is on the southeast corner of the intersection, and there's a retention pond, and I'm sure you've probably all been by it at this point. The signing location we're talking about is right at the intersection on the backside of the sidewalk, and if you could possibly go to the next page, in roughly this is, this is what it would look like. It would be constructed similar to the other signs on site with that stack stone. It's the same stack stone that's also on the wall, the retaining wall there, and on the Publix building, and would simply state, Publix welcomes you to the Village of Marvin. It would be an unlit sign, and it would be diagonally across the intersection from, there's already a sign across the intersection that's similar, being a sign that is facing the intersection for the development that's at the northeast to northwest corner of the intersection. So our goal here was to, you know, really notate that, obviously, we thought we could do something that would give Publix a presence and also welcome people to the Village of Marvin, given the fact that this is kind of the gateway inn or one of the, you know, the northeastern portion of the village. So that being said, you know, from there, we really wanted to get everyone's comments and feedback before we go forward with the official application to modify the zoning to allow this type of a gateway signage feature. Again, it is not planned to be illuminated, it's not planned to have any changeable copy on it, anything like that. It's planned to be, you know, this is, what you see is the sign without any, really, there will be no latitude to modify it or anything like that, or change it over time. So that being said, I'll turn it over to, I guess, Rohit and all members of the planning board.
Asa, do you have, this will differ from the pylon sign. Do you have, is the pylon sign also done by you guys?
The pylon sign is already being constructed, and we use the same sign company that did those pylon signs to do this. So if you, if you go by the development and you see the pylon signs are already in, the ones that are in are all there are. There's no additional signage that's allowed under the zoning, other than what you already see there, other than the signage that's actually physically on the buildings that will be built. So when the outparcels are developed, there's not pre-standing signs allowed on outparcels. And this would be the only additional sign that's not what you see out there today, so.
Were all tenants included, all existing tenants included on that pylon?
It has space for...
Space for tenets?
I believe four tenants. I'll have to pull that up real quick. But it's only, no, only a handful of tenants will be on that sign.
It's going to get that one fixed down.
So not everybody will be on there?
No, no, there's simply not room. The original zoning limited it to how many tenant families there could be, and I believe it was either three or four.
How did they get chosen? How did the three or four get chosen?
They get chosen through the leasing process. Honestly, it's whoever is probably going to be some of the more key signature users, either outparcel users or larger tenants in line. So it's similar to what you see in a lot of developments where, you know, you'll see, it may be a large shopping center or a large development, there's only a handful of the larger tenants or retailers that are on the sign, so.
Okay, thank you.
This is John. You know, and, you know, I like the idea of a, you know, welcome to Marvin sign, but obviously, the, you know, Village of Marvin is hardly visible in this sign, whereas Publix is very visible, as far as the font and the lettering.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be more than happy to explore changing the copy. I think the copy is the village's standard. I believe they use the village standard font, and they use Publix standard font. So yeah, just by the nature of the two, they're very, very different. But you're also right that the height of the two is not the same either. But we'd be more than happy to explore changing that.
Yeah, I went back to the letterhead from the agenda, and I think on the, on the letterhead of our package, it's basically all uppercase letters and bold. You know, the font may be the same, but it's, and Rohit or Austin can probably address that better than me. I just did a quick, you know, back to the letterhead to see what we used.
And they're different sizes?
Well, I would say that our font that we use on our letterhead and our website and such wasn't designed to be on roadway signs, so, and I don't even think we really have a, an official, like, graphical theme, so I think it wouldn't be too much of a stress to say, let's use a different font for this sign that stands out better.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you look at actually the emblem that's on here, you can't see it very well, but if you zoom in, the Village of Marvin is on the emblem that's, you know, kind of projects up higher than the rest of the sign. You know, maybe we could mirror that. I think honestly that would work well. It's all capital. It appears to be a little bolder. We can match that, plus it would be consistent, you know, within the individual sign.
Yeah. You know, and like I said, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the concept of just, you know, the first, you know, visual that, you know, struck me. You know, I like our village seal being added on there. That adds something to it.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, thank you for the feedback, and we can certainly modify it to, I think to, it's a good comment, we can address that.
I personally think with the corrected font that it looks good.
Is there a reason that the two fonts are different sizes?
So we had this graphic generated by our sign vendor, and it was not specifically, we didn't direct them to make the two different sizes. I think they laid it out, and this is just what they came back with. I think we could certainly, I think we can go back, we'll analyze that and see what it looks like if we were to make the two letters the same height, and when we come, come back, we can certainly, you know, address that
You know, sort of an additional comment, and pull you up to the intersection, you know, the existing stone walls, you know, around the detention pond, you know, are attractive, but you almost lose, you know, right up there next to the sidewalk, because that, that wall is down low, and it carries you back past it. So this would bring everything, you know, I think, a little closer to the, to the people.
So this isn't connected to anything? Sorry, I actually have not been by and seen the wall around the retention pond yet, so is this just a standalone?
Yeah, there's a fence that goes around the retention pond, and if you, if you go out there, and I apologize, we really should have included a photo as part of the package. But there's a fence that goes around the retention pond, and basically, what would happen is it's either sit right directly in front of the fence, or we'll actually physically remove a section of fence, and it'll sit there. Before the store opened, there was actually a Publix Now Hiring sign that was mounted on the fence, and it's going to be in the same location as that if we possibly saw that sign.
So the, the wall to the right with the two-foot dimensions, is that just an example of the thickness, or is that actually part of...
That's an example of how, exactly how thick it would be. So it's proposed to be this 20 feet long with that four-foot projection of the 20 feet that has the village emblem on it, the remainder of it that has Publix welcomes you to the Village of Marvin is the 16-foot, and then it's two-foot in width. So that's kind of like a side view.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rohit, are we voting on something or just discussing this?
This is really a pre-application type of meeting where we engage their willingness to consider this, because the process of allowing this sign would actually be a zoning text amendment, because this is a conditional district. Every sign and everything that was allowed was already decided, and they'd have to go through that process to allow this. So before, you know, putting the developers through that whole process, you know, that's why we're here, to gauge your willingness. So maybe not a, maybe not a vote would be required for now, but a consensus that, you know...
Rohit, can you speak a little more to the microphone?
Sure, sure, how's that?
There you go.
Yeah, so maybe a consensus that this would be willing, you know, that the Planning Board would be willing to see this.
I'll tell you what I'd like to see. I mean, I know about where the sign is, Asa, but I mean, I'd like to see kind of an elevation from the, from 16, or maybe sitting on Marvin Road, you know, where most of the people from Marvin are coming, down Newtown Road, actually, not Marvin, but down Newtown, wrong. See what it looks like from that, if you can get an elevated, if that's possible, to produce an elevation from there.
Absolutely. I think we could actually probably have it superimposed on a, an image from the intersection that really will give everyone a good idea.
I think that'll help you in your process, I really do. I think, you know, people see that, and it's like, yeah, that looks great. I think that'd be very helpful.
I think it would give some scale to the whole thing, you know, because a lot of people have, you know, and I'm not speaking in front of the people, but I would say a lot of people have a difficulty in visualizing, you know, how large or how small something may be until it's, see it, you know, inside, on-site, kind of thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And back to, I guess, Michael, your question. Rohit, this would be similar to our, our 7-Eleven application earlier, correct?
That's correct.
And is this sign...
And just for clarity, just to make sure, Asa, a 7-Eleven is not on the pylon, correct?
That is correct, yeah. No tenants, no tenants on the pylon.
Oh, no tenants?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Which pylon, I apologize. You're talking about the ones that are already installed?
Yeah.
You know, I am not sure if they are planned to be on that or not. I honestly cannot answer that.
Is this, is this something the developer will maintain, and, you know, if a, if a letter falls off, like, is this, is this going to be the developer's responsibility? Is it property management? I'm not exactly sure. Are you?
Yeah, that is, that is correct. So this actually, this development is owned by Publix, so this sign, like the other signs in the shopping center, will be maintained and owned by Publix. So ongoing maintenance will be by them.
So we have no control over if they go away?
I mean, I like what I see. Like I said, I'd like to see it just a different elevation, but, you know, I have no problem if they came in front of us, supporting something like this. That would be my take.
I guess maybe, Kelly, could you call for just a show of hands, is, you know, does it look, you know, the concept look good enough to proceed to the next step? I'm not trying to take, you know, tell you what to do, Kelly.
John, you're so bossy.
Yeah.
I actually can't see everyone, so...
Let me, I can, I can bring everybody back up.
So once Austin stops sharing or either gets...
No, I can, I can still share. I just have to pull everybody back up. Actually, no, I actually have to stop sharing. One second.
I personally think it does look good enough to take the next step, with, again, with the corrected font.
Okay. Okay, and I just have to pull everybody back up.
All right, could I just see a show of hands from the Planning Board if you are encouraged, encouraging them to move forward? All right. Looks like you guys are good to, good to go. So make, if you could work on making those adjustments to the font and the font sizes, as well as maybe get some pictures with the superimposed from Newtown Road, I think that would just strengthen your, your submission.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for everyone's feedback and input. Really, it's helpful in determining how to go forward in the process. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch to follow up procedurally, Asa.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're moving on to discussion of conditional use permit application 20-12548, pool in the side yard at 1901 Gray Lane. Rohit?
So this is a pool in a side yard. The way the house is oriented, it's kind of on the corner, and I'd say on the ground, it feels like it's their rear yard, but on paper, it is in their side yard, and it's adjacent to their neighbor at, I believe it's like 1905 Gray Lane.
Rohit?
So the ordinance states, any pool can be located in a side yard by right if it's at least 150 feet from the side yard property line, and if it's any less than 150 feet from the side and 200 feet from the front, then it requires a conditional use permit. So it doesn't really state a minimum there, just that if it's less than 150 feet, it requires a conditional use permit. So the application does have it at 16 or so feet from the side yard and 50-something feet from the front yard, and I really didn't advise them to change that to 20, because, I mean, 16 is not, I mean, 16 is smaller than what we normally allow for pools in the rear yard. It has to be 20 feet from the side yard, but, I mean, I didn't advise them to change that, because it could be considered to be allowed if you wanted it to, depending on this conversation. So with that, I would like to say that I do believe the applicant is in the WebEx audience today, and I think that's Mr. Ferris. And if, before I, you know, give the floor to him, if he wants to talk, if you want to talk, would you say so? And then we can get the Planning Board's consensus to let you have the floor.
Sure, Rohit. This is Matt. I'm here. Ken McKee is here also with Superior Pools. I'm the homeowner, he's being contacted to build a pool.
Great. So would, would the Planning Board please give a consensus for the two of these gentlemen to speak in the agenda item?
Okay. That's unanimous.
Okay.
All right, so I think I'm up.
Yes, let's go. Yes, yes.
All right, we had the pool design up there a moment ago, but I don't see it. What I'd like to do, if I could, share Google Earth and take the screen share from you, if that's appropriate. So I think it'll give people an understanding of kind of the way that the property's laid out. Is that okay?
Actually, Austin will share his screen. We have all those pictures and renderings in our packet, so if you just give us a second.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be better if Austin were to pull up the board.
Okay, that's fine.
One second.
When he gets, when he gets that up, again, I think it'll give everyone an understanding of how the neighborhood is designed. Like Rohit mentioned, that my house is on the corner, it's kind of positioned toward the intersection of the, of the corner of where the two streets intersect in the neighborhood. So by definition, it makes it my backyard. The neighbor's house, who I back up into, the Harpers, they, we brought them along for this journey, so I've been in North Carolina for about four years and have since decided to build this pool. And, you know, we've shared the plans with them, we have put together this, what is kind of the skeleton of a landscaping plan, to share with them. But it's really a commitment. They've, they've been very good neighbors and very accommodating to my family since we've been here. It's really a commitment to them to do what's right from a landscaping and a privacy perspective. They haven't expressed any concerns up to this point, and they actually signed off. We went ahead and took the papers to them and shared the plan with them, and they were more than willing to sign off, and we've, we've submitted that. Their house is the one down here, to the bottom of the screen. The interesting thing for me going through this process, I didn't know this was my side yard before we went through this, so it's kind of been a learning lesson, but there's other pools in the neighborhood where the configuration is pretty much the same, but I guess it's technically their backyards, so the requirements have been different. If you were to move Google Earth over a little bit to the other side of the street, it's a very similar, a very similar setup to that house 8501. They don't have a pool in this picture of Google Earth, but they do now. They put one in a year or two ago. And you can see, I guess that's technically their backyard, but it's very similar, and they have since put a pool in there. There's a few, I won't bore you with it, but there's a few other neighbor, houses in the neighborhood that are very similar to that story there. So anything else you'd like to hear, I'm open. Ken's here, if Ken wants to add anything. Like I shared with Rohit before, we designed this, we kind of thought it would need to be 10-foot from the line, because I didn't, honestly didn't know this was my side yard at the time. So if, we want to get the pool put in. I got three kids that would love to have it with, with everything going on in the world these days, but I'm not tied to the, the actual design. So if there's something that you all would like changed, we'd be glad to massage it a little bit, you know, make it, what would be improved.
Are we muted?
Yes, hello?
There you go.
Okay. What is, so if he, what is the, is it, is it 50 feet from the pool edge to the neighbor's yard for a side?
Okay, so there's, there's two things going on here. There's, when, when a person applies for a CUP to put the pool in the side yard, there is actually no minimum, the way that it's stated in the ordinance. So you could, you could approve something, you know, this is 16 feet, you could approve that.
But you said for, for rear, it's 20?
Right, for a pool that is located in the rear yard, it has to be 20 feet from the side.
I still think this is where this is. I still think this is where the side yard...
And there's also, to address another couple of questions that the applicant had, you know, your address is 1901 Greig Lane, and the neighbor is going to be 1905 Greig Lane, so that's how that makes that your side yard. And then another point is that we do, in any case, even for normal pools requiring 90% screening using evergreen trees or wall or fence or something else, usually people do go with evergreen trees, so we would make you do that as well in any case.
Yeah, and that would be perfectly acceptable. From a landscaping perspective, I'm going to do what you all require to get it approved. I'm going to do what the Harpers desire. If it's in addition to that, to make them please, again, when I moved down here, I traveled after my job, and my wife was at home with the kids, and they accommodated her, made her dinner, and took her in to really help her. So, I'm going to do what, you know, I'm committed to them to make this right for them as well. It's hard to see here, but there are trees and bushes that line the rear and then the left-hand side of the yard. It needs a little work because you can see through pockets of that, so we would put up some additional landscaping there. And then on the right-hand side, we would need to have some considerations there. Where it's open to my yard, you can go up on the street, and you can look into my side yard, backyard and side yard there from Royster Run from the road there, and we would want to take care of that either way for our own privacy. The last thing I did mention that I would add is, on the backside of the pool, which would be on the side of the Harper's house, we're planning to put a wall that's, Ken helped me with the exact details, but I think it's 18 inches to 2 feet in height, that would, it would be a structure on the pool, but it would help with the privacy if you were able to see through any bushes.
Basically, it's just an exposed wall of the pool, and with landscaping between the side yard property line and the pool, you would not be able to see through that at all. With what, if he's planning on doing, it starts the landscaping coach.
All right.
You don't have to.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I was actually wondering why there was no concrete back there to extend the pad, but now that makes sense as to why. Rohit, if we were to ask for a standard of 20 feet, like in a rear yard setback, I mean, do you, would they even have, would they even have the additional, I guess they'd have the additional four feet to move the pool just closer to the house and maybe readjust the deck?
So, if you're looking at 1901, as you're looking at the side property, with the side block that comes from his driveway, comes around to his back porch, that side block is coming out. We are pulling that side block out, and we're redoing the pool decking around that. If we have to pull that within 20 feet, then we're, he's going to be able to put the pool there at all, just because of the landscaping that needs to go in along the side property line between 1901 and 1905. Do you have anything?
I understand what you're saying, I'm just not sure, I'm just saying, could the pool itself move four feet towards the house?
Yeah, I think that if we lifted the pool up as it's designed and moved it four feet to the house, there would probably be safety concerns that it would be too close and you wouldn't want someone falling in. So, I think as it's designed, the answer to that question would be no, but I'm not, if that was a requirement, I'm not sure you couldn't come up with a solution where a different design could be taken into consideration. The other thought I had around that, because Rohit and I communicated a little bit on email, and I knew the 20 feet was in consideration, and, you know, if you did move it, right, then you may consider putting the concrete pad on the far side of the pool as well, by the neighbor's home. And then if you did, right, because otherwise you'd have that useless land there. If you did that, then you probably wouldn't have the wall. So, it's, you know, if you were to take that approach where you moved it, didn't put the wall, the wall I think is 18 inches wide, so you could buy, you know, you could buy, you could move it a foot, you could buy 18 inches with the wall, you can make the pool a foot skinnier, and there's three and a half, right? But then if you didn't have the wall there, it might, I don't know, it might be worse for the Harpers.
Kelly, can I ask what your concern is about 16 versus 20, if the neighbors are okay with it?
I just, just for some sort of consistency with our other ordinance?
It's an exception we're having to make. Each exception usually has its own characteristics.
Just asking questions.
No, I didn't know. I was just wondering why we would have them redesign the pool. I didn't know if there was another thought about that four feet that made it less palatable that I was not taking up on. I don't have to be critical, I just was kidding.
No, I don't. I'm just trying to be, trying to ask questions to be consistent with other things, so just, you know, we have to also look at what, you know...
I do have one, sorry.
Go ahead.
I do have one comment to make, which is that 20 feet, the dimension that we use is from the water's edge, so when you're doing that little calculation, don't include the depth of the wall. You can, you count it from the water's edge, so if you wanted to adjust it that way, you might have that 20 feet.
Or at least get close enough.
So, I tracked a portion of that comment that you measured from the water's edge. When we're measuring 16 feet right now, Ken, is that measuring to the water's edge, or is that measuring to the start of the pool, the start of the wall?
That is water's edge, fair.
Okay.
Yes. We do everything at water's edge as well.
Okay, so it's me that was misinterpreting that. Thanks.
So, I mean, if, you know, I think with what Matt Ferris is planning on doing with his landscaping, I think we can hide this pool and both the side and the front yard from any potential neighbors. Even if we need to readjust some of the curvature on the back of the pool to regulate it somehow, we do have room to swing the pool around towards Greig Lane a little bit more, and we can be able to re-contour the back of the pool to give us a couple more feet, if that makes sense.
Why is this, this is a different pool?
I don't want to change the focus of the conversation, but, you know, the raised wall, so, in essence, the water surface is going to be higher than the existing grade adjoining the neighbors, as I understand it. So, what would be the finish, exposed finish of that wall, that, you know, if the neighbors could see through the plantings?
The raised wall is 18 inches above the pool elevation.
What are the materials being used, the outside finishing?
It'll be a stone veneer.
So, it'd be an architectural stone finish on it, veneer finish?
Exactly. It'll be natural stone. It'll be a Tennessee field stone, grounded. We'll have concrete opening on the top for whole measures. And the stone veneer will be around the spa also. So, the spa elevation is going to be 18 inches above the pool, and then we'll start with a spa and a wraparound, put it beneath the pool.
How does this consider their side yard? I don't understand. It's behind their house.
Okay. And, you know, I'm getting into, trying to touch on some of the things we touched on previously, is, you know, the landscaping requirements, and then they'll have to be totally fenced all the way around, correct, Rohit?
Correct.
It is fenced. I don't think like fence will be up to code because there's a bar that you could climb on. We've had those discussions, so we would maybe put that around and maybe...
The front of their house is considered where their driveway is?
No final decision there?
Because their address is Greig Lane, so that automatically just makes it their side yard.
That's going to be up to the Union County final building inspectors. So, the pool will be enclosed within side fence.
And I did add, so I don't want to make sure it's assumed, we did go through the HOA approval on this, and the HOA has approved it already.
And you have the letter from Jan, the next door neighbor at 1905?
Yeah, I do, and we sent that over to Rohit, so he should have it as well.
It is in the packet.
So, does one of us need to make a motion?
So, I think there are two conversations happening here. One was to either allow the people that have signed, or ask that the applicant, or recommend the people contingent on the applicant giving at least 20 feet of setback.
I personally would make a motion to approve that, presented based on the fact the HOA has approved it, the neighbors in agreement, and that happens to be one of those properties you see fairly often in these meetings, where the side yard is in a classic sense of what most people perceive to be a side yard, as sort of one of those unusual situations that just generally, the neighborhood in my opinion, as well as the direct neighbors, so I would move to accept this proposal.
I would second that.
Rohit, would we need to alter the motion to make sure that we saw a landscaping plan with evergreens, additional plantings?
I think we have a motion that's been offered and seconded, correct?
Your motions can still be amended at this point.
Okay.
If requested, but it would be a second, it would be a second motion.
I mean, if we approved it like this, technically, well, I guess the...
Rohit, as it stands, if this is approved, is this, is all proper screening required in what's been shown here?
Right, the landscaping, the landscaping is separate, like, we would still require the minimum landscaping, which is 90% screening, and I would make sure that they have a landscaping plan before the applicant gets approved.
Okay, I think, okay.
So, Rohit, should the, do you think the motion should be amended to include that condition as your statement?
You can amend them. I think you can amend the motion just to, you know, cover all the bases. You could just amend the motion to add contingent on receiving a landscape plan, a compliant landscape plan or something.
Mark, would you mind amending?
I move to amend my motion as suggested by Kelly.
Mark, just for the record, the motion, you would actually need to say what the motion is. So, you want to, you move to amend the motion to include the required screening?
I move to amend the motion to include the wording, which reaffirms that all the required screening will also be built with the pool as presented to us.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That works, and now I need a second.
Mike, you still on a second?
I couldn't get to my own mute button quick enough. Yeah, a second, that's all right.
We waited, it's fine.
Yeah, I raised my hand, I hope that you...
I can't, we can't see you.
Oh, yeah, we're still screen sharing.
Oh, okay.
May I take that off so we can get a good vote here?
There we go, that's what I did.
Okay.
All right.
So, you're ready to take a vote?
So, all in favor of the motion on the table? All right, approved. Good luck, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and all your time and consideration in helping through this. The one question I have, and then I'll do the finished, is for landscaping plan, we need attorneying something formally? Is that correct?
Yes, you'll need to show basically where you're planting trees and, you know, the spacing type of trees. And if you want, I can send you some sample landscaping set up in the past for other pools, but it's simple, just a survey showing where you want to...
That would be awesome if you could, I appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you, good luck with your pool.
All right, moving on to the next conditional use permit application, 20-12554, pool in rear yard that abuts side yard at 2028 Groves Edge Lane.
Okay, so, this is another pool in a rear yard that abuts side yard, and it's fairly similar to a lot of the ones we've seen in the past, but in this case, something interesting is that there is a pool on the other side of the street in the exact same situation two or three years ago, they did get a conditional use permit, and it was approved then. So, let's see, yes, Austin, you can zoom in on that. So, you see, they do have a landscaping, looks to be 71 feet from the rear yard, the property line that abuts that side yard, and then 42 feet from one side, and 86 feet, 78, something, somewhere around 80 feet from this street. So, I mean, I think we've approved pools with less setbacks than this in the past. I'm not entirely sure if the applicant is on the call today, but I would like it if, Austin, if you could go to a Google Earth of this property, so I can, so we can see the other property in question, and, you know, kind of the relationship between this property and the property that is abutting their side yard. Oh, and there's, I think, one calling user, if you are the applicant, please speak up at any time if you want to request to speak.
Could you...
Austin, do you have the Google Maps built up?
Yes.
Oh, and I'm sharing the wrong thing, I apologize, I need to change my screen.
Yeah, you're sharing the PDF, not the screen.
Just one second.
Yes, thanks.
Is that, oh, I think I switched the wrong thing. Can you see the map?
Yes, yes, that's it, thanks. Could you zoom out just a bit? Maybe a scroll or two, yeah, there. So, you'll see now the rear yard is in the back, and the side yard, the house in the side yard in question is on Red Twig Court. So, it's pretty far. And then you'll also see across Red Twig Court, there is a house on Groves Edge Lane, who's also rear yard, abuts the side yard on Red Twig Court. You see the one with the pool already built? That also has a U... there is a house on Grove's Edge Lane, who is also rear yard, abuts the side yard on Red Twig Court. You see the one with the pool already built? That also has UTE. That was approved in twenty seventeen or so, and it's very similar to the pool that is being proposed by this applicant here. So at this point, I really don't have anything special to talk about for this application.
Rohit, back to landscaping again. What, this rendering is, this drawing is quite lovely. But does it need to be evergreens or is what they provided tall enough with enough screening?
It does need to be evergreens. There is a height. I need to check the coordinates. But there is a certain minimum height. I think it's six feet if I remember correctly. But landscaping, if it doesn't seem to be six feet, then I need to make them revise that landscaping. But it does need to be evergreens.
Could we then make a motion to approve it, assuming that they come to compliance with regards to landscaping like we did before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then I, given all of this, if there's no more discussion, I would like to make a motion that we approve this under the conditions that landscaping requirements be met.
A second.
Who was that, the second?
Who seconded?
Deborah.
Deborah.
Okay, let me go back to the voting screen here.
Sorry, one second, okay, perfect. All right. All in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, unanimous.
And Kelly, this doesn't have to go on the record, but I too, when I was looking over this, I was like, that is quite the drawing and that is a very colorful rendering of the suggested plants to go in the backyard. That was more colorful than my backyard currently is.
I just want those coloring skills. All right, thanks, everybody.
Okay, I forgot to call Christina, so let me do that.
I will say this very, I'll draw this out to give you time. All right, so Austin is getting Christina on the phone for a discussion and preliminary DRB review of new village hall elevations and timelines for construction.
Sure. Well, I can introduce the topic while they're getting on the phone. Essentially, the council had decided that they want to renew the village hall, the floor plan and the exterior, mainly based on a recommendation of a resident architect who gave a much better idea of a drawing in this case, the idea of the architecture, which the council liked a lot better. So we did actually pursue changing the facade and the interior. And as the ordinance that I attached in the packet, all non-residential buildings require the review from the DRB. So this is the first of maybe two or three meetings.
Two.
That will have, that will be presenting the concepts for the new village hall design because I'm also trying to.
Rohit, you got a lot of feedback, by the way, and we've already got Christina on the phone.
Okay, well, let me just finish the one thing I'm saying. So there's, this is gonna be like the first of a couple of meetings. We have to review the elevations and the materials and the landscaping, the site plan. But so far, we only have the architecture, and Christina's gonna bow out what we have so far.
Hello, everyone. Can y'all hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Can you guys hear her? Yeah, they're giving you the thumbs up that you can't see.
Yeah, she's giving a thumbs up because she's on the phone.
I know this is not the site-specific plans. I just wanted to give y'all kind of a first initial opportunity to speak, to talk about any issues that you may see with the current elevations that you have. You should have the front, back, and side elevations of what we are proposing it to look like, as well as, you know, the floor plans, which I don't think y'all have a lot of input into that, but just provided that just because we have it already. We just hired our civil engineer earlier last week. So we will have those, the civil plans, the landscaping and all that stuff done within about a month, and we hope to get that back to you guys before your next meeting. But just wanted to kind of give you a preliminary look at the current elevation so that we could start reviewing that, and if y'all had any suggestions on building material or anything of that nature that you wanted to see, then we could go ahead and discuss some of that stuff. We are in a pretty aggressive timeline, so we want to make sure that we give, you know, all parties ample time to look at it, but we want to make sure we adhere to the timeline for various reasons. Primarily because we are seeking financing for this project, and the way the LGC works is they cannot authorize an approval until we get the bids back. And then when we get the bids back, which is supposed to be sometime in March, the bids are only good for a certain number of days, so we need to make sure we move pretty aggressively on this. So if there's any issues that y'all just see right now, let's go ahead and start addressing some of these things so we can get them looked at, or if there's any input again into materials, let's talk about that as well.
All right. Anybody have any comments, questions? All right, well, while they're thinking, I do have a question, Christina. I see there are handicap ramps in the front of the property, but won't the parking be in the back? And I don't see handicap ramps represented in the back in the rear elevation.
We're still working that out because we have to do expansion on the side. So if one of the requirements is to have handicap in the back, which I would think that it is, then we would make sure that is taking place.
All right, cool.
Can we share that? Can we put that on the screen for all of us?
Yep, just one second, we'll pull it up.
I could be wrong, Kelly, but I think that handicap, we just have to write handicap accessibility on one end or the other, and if that's the case, then we may just do, you know, one side. But if it's required to be on both sides, then we would do both. I don't know the answer to that for sure.
Yeah, my concern is just, you know, if anyone has a handicap parent or child, having to walk from the parking lot to the front of the building to access a handicap ramp, I would just put it as close to the handicap parking as possible because that's where it's needed.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, good suggestion.
I've got, you know, a couple of questions, I guess, and one is just, you know. First off, I really like this, you know, the elevations and the plan versus what, you know, what was on the board previously. And then the second story that, you know, that you see on the elevations, is that actually an open space above the chamber areas or is that just, you know, for looks?
It is. It is. It's a faux second story, so there's not actually a floor there. It does open up to the meeting room, so the ceilings will be elevated in that area.
Okay, so it is a flat kind of thing there?
Yes.
Okay, you know, that will make that meeting area really spacious.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And, you know, it looks like lap siding. Am I assuming something like a hardy plank or something?
That is the intent. However, the complete building design, as far as the outside, has not yet been decided. But from my understanding, that's the intent.
Okay, because, you know, that being said, I think it really fits in with the, you know, the heritage, you know, it looks like we have been there since the beginning.
There's been discussion of brick and like stone and that sort of thing, and I don't think that any of the council is interested in brick or stone at this time. So I think that it will be some type of hardy plank.
That, I mean, because, you know, they didn't use brick and stone, you know, in eighteen whatever. Or at least in Marvin.
John, I would echo that.
We'll have all that stuff finalized by the time y'all do your final review. So I'll have more details on that once we get the final plans back.
John, I would echo what you said. I think these initial drawings look really good. I like that big, open area with a faux second floor. I do agree with the planking. I think there's probably quite a few types in an architect that come up, which would probably look good, but I don't know sure us to be real specific about what plank goes on it. Is it probably needed or appropriate right now? But in general, I think it's a great concept drawing, from my perspective.
Yeah, I think so, you know, versus board and batten and some of the other things that were thrown around previously. You know, it seems more fitting for the area.
Yeah. Christina, I have a quick question. This is not quite about the outside elevation, but because of that opened meeting space, do you guys know how that's gonna affect the acoustics of that room?
No, I do not. That's a good question. We will have a separate AD group come in and do most of the audio visual stuff. So if there's something that's needed extra from there, we'll have to add that into their bid, but that's a really good question.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a, if that's gonna be like an echo chamber, instead of trying to fix it on the back end, I would just see if they could, I don't know, tilt a wall or something so that you don't get that kind of crazy, you know. That's gonna drive everybody crazy. No one's gonna want to be in that room, especially the council.
Good point.
It looks beautiful. Way there.
Yeah, we're really excited to move forward with it, and, you know, we're looking forward to getting those final plans so y'all can go through it and look at them. I just, you know, wanted to emphasize the timeline, so if y'all had an opportunity to give input now on what you see, you know, I thought now was the time to do it so I can incorporate some of those things into the design.
Yeah, what, how does the, I know that the floor plan is, you know, different than we had before. Right, I like the floor plan, but just curious, how does the size and everything in there compare to what was being in the works previously? Roughly the same or?
We tried to keep the program the same, as far as, you know, how many office spaces, how many, how much square footage. We obviously reduced the square footage slightly. But in order to expand, we wanted to make sure we provided opportunities for future expansion when we needed it, and so we've kind of developed these plans based on the perimeter that we can expand on those side wings as we grow and as we need more office space or as we need, you know, future space for whatever reason. We've kind of taken away that future expansion from the previous plans and just gave us the opportunity to grow when that time comes. And we did make them even rooms smaller. We, because we reduced the second floor, we were able to take out, you know, the place that we had stairs and the elevator and that sort of thing.
Is the timeline currently available for viewing? Do you have that, we could look at that?
I do have it inside one of the previous agenda packets, Austin, if you can pull that up and show them.
You'll have to give me one second, I have three minutes to put.
Now, this timeline, you know, changes slightly from, you know, day to day when we get updates on where people are on certain projects. For the most part, it is pretty much the same, what we have now. And we are estimating the groundbreaking to be sometime around May, June, July.
I mean, you're putting this out for bid, correct?
Yes, it should go out for bid in March, early March. It's not February. I can't remember the exact dates, I'm stuck in my head, but.
How long did the previous, how long were the people given before on the previous building?
On the bidding process?
Yeah.
Initially, I think it was two weeks, and we had to go back out and rebid because we didn't have enough come in. So I think, I think they had a total of maybe a month, month and a half. And with this process, I believe we gave them a month.
How many builders have responded to the RP and said they'd have to bid?
Say that question one more time?
How many bidders do we anticipate getting?
We have to have three. If we don't have three, we have to go out for a rebid and that we can make a decision at that point. But by law, we have to have three. We will send it out, we'll send it out to several though. I mean, last time, we sent it out to over twenty. We also put it on the dates historically underutilized business. So anyone that had those underutilized businesses could bid on it as well, but we didn't get but eighty-three or four bids.
Okay, so just to be clear, what you said, if that March or what you said possibly February, that's for a set of plans that's suitable for bidding to go out? Is that what you're shooting that for?
Can you repeat that one more time? It's hard for me to hear you guys, I'm sorry.
Mark, go ahead and ask that again, and I can translate.
I just was asking, I wanted to clarify that what you said earlier about the timeline, you said March, you said possibly February, so that's to get a full set of architectural and civil plans and everything that's suitable for bidding? Is that the timeline you're talking about?
Austin, do you have the timeline pulled up yet?
I'm working on, I'm trying to remember which meeting you last had it in the packet in.
Can you just pull up, can you go into the V drive and pull up my documents?
Sure, so that's probably, yeah, definitely easier. Okay.
So go into V drive manager Christina.
Yep.
Village Hall.
Yep.
And you should see one that says twenty twenty, I'm sorry, no, 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 that's the building plans. Though, you should see a timeline that says maybe timeline final. The last date that I went into it was probably last week sometime, so that's the motion.
All right, I got it, I'm pulling it up now.
Okay.
One second, I gotta switch over to another screen.
You should see a section in February where it says, "Construction bids go out," or something, something like that.
Almost there. Yeah, I think, can everybody see the Word document that's got the timeline in it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I was like, we did it? There we go. Okay, you're good, Christina, it's pulled up.
But I can't see it, Austin, so you just have to work with me.
Okay.
There's a section that says, "Construction bids go out," or "Construction RFP goes out." But it'll specifically say, "Construction RFPs are bids."
Hey, Austin, could you go back to sharing the TV screen? Because now that you've moved the Word document back to TV, you're just sharing the violence floor.
Yeah, I'm not the most technologically literate person, just one second.
My neck sucks. So much is here.
No, I didn't say that, but you can. Chris, okay, hold on, almost there. Okay, we're gonna try this one more time. And, okay, there we go.
Start in the February timeline and just look for that construction bid RFP.
February eighth, banking RFP out to bidders.
No, two-two, well, right before that.
Right before?
Yep. RFP, oh no, that's, yeah.
The banking RFP?
No, it'll say construction. There's two different RFPs we have to do. Banking, I mean, construction is the one.
Construction bid opening three nineteen?
Yeah, but when does it say that the RFPs open up? It's in February sometime.
Two twenty-two?
RFP for construction and, okay, RFP for construction is two twenty-two to three nine.
Okay, so the bid opening is on March nineteenth, is that right?
The bid opening is March ninth.
March, okay. So then we have two weeks slated for bids to go out. Which we may need to extend that some.
You are gonna need to extend that, I believe. Totally agree. In this construction market, if you want to get legitimate contractors doing real serious bidding with, like, rolling up their sleeves, being innovative, value engineering, getting good pricing, you're gonna have to give at least three weeks.
Yeah, and we can, we should be able to push that up, as long as we've got the plans in our hand and y'all have approved them. I believe that I've slated for y'all, but it has the last date that I hope that y'all give us approval. What date is that, Austin? Is it the February meeting?
Design review, report, final recommendation is February sixteenth.
Okay, so if that's the case, then we're gonna have to, if we need to extend the bid process, there's no way that I could move up y'all's final approval unless y'all do a special meeting. And so if we need to extend that bidding time, then we're gonna have to extend the process just a little bit longer on our end. just a little bit longer on our end, which could be affected by L G C as well. It's just, there's so many different moving parts to this, it's really complicated, but.
I would, I would just, my, my one comment would be, you know, this, this has been dragging on in various forms for years. To cut a week off the quality and jeopardize the quality of the bid responses, to me is just, uh, is not a very, not very good foresight on our part to go down that. You know, to tell them to make, to make it a big rush emergency for the building and the subcontractors makes no sense.
So, Planning Board, would we be willing to hold a special meeting to get final approval depending on when Christina needs us to? So that she's not dependent on us doing it on two sixteen?
I don't know, I mean, is, is there some, is there something special about having to break ground in May? I mean, May, June, July, August, they're all very good months to, I mean, as long as you're not breaking ground in December, January, February, you're fine. I mean, what's?
The, the problem, the problem that we're going to have is the L G C is going to approve our financing based on a certain date and that date is static. We can't change that date. We could move it back if we wanted to, but we already have a third party financial advisor that's working on everything that's seen for that project. So it's going to be nearly impossible for us to move that date. And that's all bound by the L G C's calendar. And once they give us approval, those, they will not give us approval until we actually get the construction bids back. So we have to have those construction bids back before that L G C meeting. And then once, typically, construction bids are only good for six months based on, you know, the cost of material. Contractors typically do not want to push out any more than six months is what we've seen in our previous experience. So by the time we get the construction bids back and what we're estimating now, March, we are estimating L G C approval in April. And we would have to award those contracts subsequently. But y'all would have to have the approval on the plans before we can even go to L G C because we don't know what we're bidding on at that point. Does that make sense?
I'll take your word for all that. And I would say if it, if it takes a special meeting to have the project run smoothly with the contractors who are going to bid and build it, then we should have a special meeting for an hour or two or whatever it is.
I agree.
Well, if, if, if everybody seems to be on board with that, I will tell you that I hope to get the plans back before I have put in your, in this calendar here. I actually hope to have them back pretty quickly. And if that's the case, y'all may even have them at your January meeting and you can go over all the final detail at that point in time. But, um, and that would still allow us to go out for bid longer than what we had initially planned. So if everything works out well, then, then that would take place. Uh, I'm just, worst case scenario on this timeline is what I've kind of planned out.
That, that sounds good because I was concerned that you weren't going to be able to get, you know, plans completed by, you know, February, you know, bid documents.
Yeah, the bid documents are pretty much done. I mean, we did it the last time with the last plan. So there's not really a whole lot of changing that has to take place with that. It's just really the, the detail sheet and the civil site plans and that sort of thing. But we've already started working on a new survey. Our civil engineer was hired last week and he's pretty expedient with his process. Um, and then our, like I said, our, our engineer was hired several months ago and they should already have all the building plans in AutoCAD now. They're, they're just ready for the civil to go ahead and finish his work up.
Well, good. So, so what is our charge here tonight? Just everybody to be able to, to kind of air their thoughts and then just capture them and then sort of move, move forward?
Yeah, I wanted to have y'all go over these one, one initial time because I know the next time you see them, you're going to have everything in your hands. And it's going to be a lot of information, a lot of material for y'all to look through. And I just wanted to give you a first stab to see if y'all had any concerns that just kind of jumped out at you, if you had any recommendations on the building material or just anything that really was major that we needed to get addressed. And so by the next meeting, we'll have the final plans and y'all can go over all the questions at that point in time.
Are the, the civil plans, I assume, are not expected to change much from the last time we go around?
They will actually. Um, we are, we are, we've reduced the footprint, so it's going to be a smaller footprint. We are planning to do just bare minimum parking and then have a overflow parking with permeable pavers. And this will reduce the total impervious area for the impacted surface. And if we get the land disturbance under an acre, we will not have to put in the V M Ps, which would reduce the site work dramatically. So it, we should see a reduction in the footprint and maybe the loss of the V M Ps, which is, is good. And the landscaping should pretty, pretty much be the same. Um, the parking would be reduced, obviously, like I just mentioned. And the, the, the concept of us moving the building closer to the road is something that we will discuss and talk about.
So I, I see that you awarded the civil engineering contract last week, it looks like on the ninth.
Same here.
It looks like the civil contract was awarded on the ninth and you said he was a quite a efficient, quick person?
Yes, yes.
So what, I mean, because it, I mean, it seems like we could probably do this in two phases. You know, we'd look at the civil stuff and then in one meeting and maybe look at the architectural the next. Like if, if we're going to have the civil, it sounds like we could have the civil engineer stuff by January, right?
I should have, actually, I should have the, the architectural plans back before I have the civil. I can get the architectural plans pretty quickly.
Okay.
But if y'all want to break it up into two meetings, I'll get the architectural plans first and then we can add the civil on, onto that if y'all want to do that.
Well, my, my only thought there was if we get a piece of it in, let's look at it and not wait for both pieces, whichever is first. I mean, since, since it seems to be a big hurry, I was thinking, what could be most efficient?
Mark Peterson, problem solver.
Yeah, I usually create, I'm trying to change my ways.
All right, anything else for Christina before we let her go? All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Christina.
Have a good one.
You too.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, moving on. Let's see, where were we? All right, Discussion of Development Finance Institute, so D F I Progress and December Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee Meeting. My God, that's a lot of words.
We can add more.
No, let's just make a weird acronym.
Yeah, there are a lot of acronyms that I needed to include because we need to talk about, we just need to include in the agenda. Um, so there's, so there's a couple of things going on. First of all, I guess I'll just say that December meeting, I decided we could.
Rohit, we can hardly hear you.
Okay, give me one second.
You like, you like to fade out and come back in constantly.
Austin, can you unscreen share?
Yes, my apologies. Okay. Okay. I'm assuming everybody can see, see Rohit now.
Is that better?
Yes, yes.
All right, great, great. Um, okay, so two, so I don't know how much anyone, everyone heard. Uh, so I'll just start over because I didn't say that much. Um, so the December meeting of the Strategic Plan Committee was canceled uh, because I wanted to let the D F I come back with at least a draft of the scenarios that you guys looked at last meeting and we presented to them. Um, but, uh, so, so we did do that. They just, they got those scenarios about a week ago and they're starting to plug it in. Now, they're really starting to understand what we're looking for and plug it into their model. It seems that all three scenarios would be feasible, but they're really saying that the high development scenario may be too much density, but it's fine because even the low development scenario is probably going to be feasible. Uh, but again, this is, that's just preliminary talks, so I wouldn't take, uh, take that and run with it. Um, but in, in the meantime, I do, I do want to quickly show you, and I'm going to share my screen in a second. Um, I am on my computer now. Um, I wasn't until this call. Um, so, um, maybe I'll turn my video on because it's not, not pretty face either. But, um, anyway, so this is what, this is the map that I made for them with the, the three scenarios. And so you can really kind of start to visualize, you know, what the areas are and the square footage and the view sheds. I did include a link to that in the map. Maybe, um, maybe some of you have a chance to explore this, uh, this mind map. It's very cool, it's very interactive. I'm going to show you how it works by just kind of navigating through it. Uh, y'all can see my screen, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Um, so over here, it kind of works like any G I S application where you have layers and you can click them on and off. Um, so there are some other layers too, like unbuildable area, and I'll talk about them in a second. Basically, we have the three scenarios here, the low, medium and high. Um, you can even like turn them on top of each other to see what they look like you want. Um, and so you can really see what the view sheds look like. Now, that's an eighty-five foot view shed there. Um, and it, and it'll explain it. You can click on the map and you can explain this and this is just as interactive as if you were to, uh, click on the link yourself. Uh, so that's a fifty foot buffer and I really, I really took great efforts to make every polygon descriptive of what it is. In the next meeting, I really hope to show you guys, you know, real, like real examples of what, uh, you know, the buffers really entail. Uh, my screen there.
Rohit, did you say that D F I's already, they're already got their scenarios? They got, they've already put the scenarios through the model or are they still working on it?
Well, they just started. It's not like, uh, here are the scenarios, plug them in and go kind of thing. Uh, there are a lot of moving parts apparently. And, uh, the ability to, uh, to do this project is determined not just by these components, but a lot of other things that I didn't ask you because they're kind of fixed. Like three big costs is kind of fixed by facilities, uh, pricing for things and water and sewer. It's also kind of fixed by union counties, public works. Uh, one second, my, uh, my screen goes, so let me see if I can use the, the rest. Um, but I guess the point is, the point is that we've, we're making a lot of progress uh, to, to judge whether this district is viable and they're going to look at a lot of things, right? They're going to look first from the developer's perspective. You know, if we ask too little, will developers be able to build it? And they're going to look for the viability a little bit from the market perspective, right? Is it enough? Um, is it too much? Um, and so I, so I just wanted to show you that this is what we're working with. Quickly explain also that, um, for the commercial densities, we are really only looking at, um, the eligible area. So for example, this, uh, this three parcel combination is eleven acres. But for the amount of, um, commercial they could fit, we would only use the four acres. So four acres times point two five floor area ratio gives forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square foot of commercial, you know, building space in the high development scenario. And, and you know, D F I is coming back and saying, you know what, that is pretty high. I mean, as far as developments go, that's normal. But for Marvin, then that's pretty high. You're going to be talking about, you know, that's going to require some strips from two stories. And you know, if that's too much of a departure from, um, what we're envisioning, then we're just not going to go with the high density scenario, even though we're technically fit. Um, the low density scenario is also around three point six acres, but, uh, they would be allowed basically half as much square footage, um, in this purple area. So you'd have the view shed, purple area with the commercial of twenty-three thousand and that includes an existing building, we hope that to be restful. And then in the back here, you have eight acres because we're using point eight units per acre for the low density scenario. Uh, that eight acres would have to fit on this, uh, one, one, sorry, eight units would have to fit on one point five acres. Um, and so, I mean, you could fit eight single family houses on one point five acres. They would just have to be allowed to be a little closer to depth there. Um, and so looking at Scott White's property, there's, there's a concept of the, um, Nardis property to cut out the unbuildable area so that we already know what we're working in advance. I mean, obviously, um, you know, you could, you could, if you didn't look at the wetlands, you could build all the way out here. Um, but you know, we've been told by, um, some of the people who live in Meadowland, well as Scott White himself, that, you know, there's no chance of building back there. So just already account for the fact that whatever allowance we give him would only be allowed to be built in this area that I've drawn here. So now we're looking at twenty units on nine acres. Um, and so we already know in advance, yeah, we're probably going to have to, I mean, fit the houses closer together, but, uh, recognizing that, uh, it's twenty-six acres. So today he could build twenty-six houses. But in a, in a point eight acre, point eight units per acre allowance, he'd only be able to allow to build twenty. He'd be able to build them on that nine acres. And then all this area in the back would be, um, unbuildable. Um, off on the right side, we do see that there are some exceptions because obviously Willow's house is built so close to the road. Oh, not to bother.
Rohit, you broke up the middle there.
You know, it's, okay, okay, how's that, how's that? I keep forgetting.
You're good.
Okay, okay. Um, so his house is a little closer to the road, so we'd have to allow that to be, you know, where it is. Um, and so, and so the case for the president, uh, Scott White's house. Um, you, I mean, to keep the character of Marvin, you'd have to allow those to be where they are, even if the allowable view shed is much greater, um, for new developments. Um, that's just a, that's a concept. Um, and I, I really think that, um, that kind of, uh, explains everything on there. And I want to go into, I don't want to really describe every property, um, in detail because the link is in the packet there. Um, I believe it's clickable, but if it's not, you can, you can use the short link that I provided. Um, and just kind of explore this for yourself and, you know, start to understand, um, you know, how much can fit on each property, you can fit on the scenarios that, um, with the D F I. And finally, I will, uh, I really do hope to provide more like drawn, like more visual, um, you know, representations of the square footage at a, you know, maybe the next meeting.
Well, you had a question?
Yes.
I thought, I thought I understood, but maybe I don't now. In calculating, uh, allowable buildable area, you know, commercial, uh, at whatever F A R we're talking about, and we've, we've thrown it out because I don't think we've ever even officially, you know, agreed on three hundred feet of depth. But let's just use that, that number. Uh, so does, does the view shed, whatever we, does that not count in the, the square or the acreage for the F A R for commercial or is that excluded? Or is that something we have to decide?
Um, well, it's not really decided yet and I do understand that we haven't decided officially on the three hundred foot depth, but it's really, it's, it's a really good depth that captures, you know, where you can fit buildings, the parking, the stormwater uh, for commercial uses. Uh, so we're just kind of going to go with that and if we need to change that in the future, everything is, everything is acceptable. Um, but yes, it worked, the acreage does count in the view shed as part of the acreage. So the full, whatever acreage is within three hundred feet of the road is counted towards the eligible acreage. But the commercial buildings and parking and stuff can only go in the parking area.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you see how I wrote, written in the comments here, it's a two point three plus one point three. So that's the two point three you can see down here. And then this is the one point three that you can see down here.
Okay.
Yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So the view shed counts with the acreage, but it's only, the commercial, everything is only allowed to be built in the purple.
Hey Rohit?
Yes?
That, that, um, medium density, the yellow area you are about to hover over, uh, around the lake?
Hmm.
The part to the right of that little pond?
Hmm.
How would, if that was developed, how would they even access that?
That, yeah, that is a really, uh, that is really problematic. Um, I've talked to that property owner and there is, uh, there are, there are a few options and none of them are really great. Um, you can't really build in the back here. Obviously, um, one thing I didn't mention is that, you know, for current ordinances, you can build roads, driveways, um, and even stormwater, in some cases, the, the public open space in the buffers. But, um, in this case, there is kind of sensitive, uh, en- environment there. So it's going to be very unlikely that they'll be able to build a road back here to where I'm drawing right now. Um, I think, uh, either they're, ooh. Um, either they're going to have to, uh, kind of forget about the idea of building back there or they might have to ask banks for a driveway easement. Um, but whatever happens is not really, um, I mean. Um, but whatever happens is not really, um, I mean, not really, I mean, I have to think about it, but, um, we don't really have to make any decisions at this time.
Hmm.
Yeah, I mean, long story short, none, I mean, none of the options are really good. They may end up just building in the, the, the front area here, putting all eight allowable units in that area, which is maybe one, one acre, but it's, I mean, it's doable. Single family houses, um, kind of measured them out, like in, in, like the Waverly, uh, area. There are single family houses decently sized, uh, just closer together, almost no yard. Um, and, you know, eight houses can fit on an acre. Um, we even have that, you know, here in Marvin with those, uh, Amber Meadows and Courtyards, of course. Um, I keep mentioning that if we don't have more than one unit per acre, then they don't need to be age restricted. But that's the kind of, you know, single family style housing that could fit, uh, you know, and it, and exist, and currently exist in Marvin.
If that was turned into, say, a park or something, I mean...
They did talk about that too. Like, if they were to fit all their residential allowance in the front, they would be willing to, uh, consider that back area for a park, and it would really just tie into, uh, the preserve trail that already goes back there. So, you know, like I said, there are some options on the table, and, um, you know, they're aware. This particular property owner does, you know, want to see this vision, uh, this, uh, you know, this heritage district vision. They are really, um, on board with that. So, we'll have to figure out what is possible. Um, but see, this, this visualization really kind of brings light to those kinds of issues, right? Because with the hundred foot buffer, you, you know, you don't realize that, you know, this kind of allowable residential area is divided like that. So this is kind of just a start, uh, you know, figuring out the different, you know, issues that come up when you try to, um, kind of develop a, a formulated, um, zoning district that is supposed to apply to all properties now. There's, there's only like twenty property pieces. We can have, we brainstorm this into all the individual solutions.
And many of the purple areas, like, just, they're so, like, spaced out. There's, there's not a lot of connectivity.
I mean, that's really just where the commercial stuff would be allowed to be built. But on the ground, there is gonna be, they're, they're really gonna feel a lot closer because there's gonna be sidewalks, there's gonna be street stage, open spaces. Now, the public open space is like a really big idea, and that's why there's so much room in between. Because that's where we're gonna fit a lot of the public open spaces. That could go up to the road in a lot of cases. We don't really need that, that part to be, you know, leave market that bad. Um, some cases, I'm not saying that, you know, kids are gonna be playing up against the road. Um, what I'm saying is that some of the public open space could be in the view shed, and then, and at the end of the day, this, this district will, will be a lot more cohesive than a public area.
Rohit, that, that was to my question. Where are you, uh, expecting to have the public open spaces?
Um, they would really, they could really go anywhere. There's not a designated, um, area that they have to go. Um, I, I mean, it, it really depends on the property and the property owner, but, um, what they're able to do. Um, it could go in some places in the view shed, it could be in the commercial area, it could be a combination of commercial and residential area. Um, but, uh, we really don't know until, um, this, the site owners, the property owners really develop more of a site plan and figure out what they want and where things could grow.
So when, when, um, when do you think that, uh, the D F I will have their report? Are we muted?
No, we're not. No, we can hear us.
Rohit, we can't hear you.
Okay, um, so I hope that they will, uh, present, uh, a draft at the beginning of January and the final report at the council's January twenty-eighth work session meeting.
So will we get a copy of it at the same time, or before, or after?
Um, I would hope that, uh, I could also present that draft to both the committee and the planning board, uh, before their final touches and present it to the council.
Cool. All right, anyone else have any comments, questions? Interpretive dance?
No.
All right, moving on. Although you guys have missed Austin coming through these curtains over here, it's been a show. All right.
I want to say, I do wanna come, I liked the map a lot, good job, our, uh, Rohit.
Thank you, thank you. Um, and, and it's interactive, like I said, so you find the link in the agenda, and, uh, click around and explore, and there's a lot of different layers too that you can explore. District houses, possible road connections, um, you know, that's all areas. So, there's a lot to explore if you find that link in the agenda.
All right.
Cool. Cool.
All right, moving on to discussion of Union County Twenty-Fifty Comprehensive Plan and Public Input Solicitation. So was this what, was this last week?
Um, yeah, this is the last week. So, uh, just to back up a second, because I didn't put a memo in this, uh, for this item, but there is a link that you click, and you'll see that, uh, the county is working on their comprehensive plan, and, uh, uh, public comment period ends at the end of the week, and they're really trying to push, uh, to get as many comments as they can, and this is, this is relevant to municipalities too. Um, so I'm just gonna, uh, let's see, the comment period goes through December eighteenth, which is this Friday, and I want to, uh, just kind of quickly, uh, you know, go through their, uh, you know, their feedback tool. The link is in the agenda. Um, it's right here, it's in the, uh, heading. Um, and, and so, let's go through this real quick. Uh, so this is their, uh, feedback tool. Um, they, there is a quick video here, um, and I think this will, this will do the best job, um, I think, uh, summarizing the Twenty-Fifty Comprehensive Plan. I think as a planning board, you, you guys actually know what they're up to, so I'm just gonna go ahead and play that video at all.
Rohit, is this gonna play well through WebEx?
It's not?
Uh, a lot of times, video sounds garbled through WebEx. I wanna make sure we're not gonna deafen people here.
All right, all right, then let me start playing it, and tell me, tell me how it goes, how it goes. Uh, wait, let me, uh, let me see, like, can you share the audio directly through my speaker? Okay, let me just start playing it, tell me how it goes. Okay, does that, does that sound garbled, or does it sound right?
I heard nothing.
Heard nothing? Oh, geez, okay. Um, hmm.
Nothing here either.
Why don't you just do a voiceover and like hum a little tune?
Um, sure, why not?
Rohit, Mariah Carey this time.
No, not those high notes, though, that is painful.
Oh, I can do it.
Whoa, challenge! The Marvin Planning Board Karaoke Night.
Okay. Project is called Union County Twenty-Fifty Plan. This is Archie Morgan. He's the chairman of the coordinating committee. This is an overview of the plan, two minutes. Um, quick drill down. Hmm, increased stormwater regulations. Well testing for new homes. And flexibility for development in rural areas. Increased open space requirements for some divisions. Closing the donut hole. The idea that, uh, the county would allow some areas to be regulated by the municipality. Hmm, that's a really pretty roundabout there. It's a different roundabout, it's also pretty. Hmm.
Broadband? This is the nineties.
Believe it or not, there's large parts of the US.
My son knows.
That's the people, that's the people fiber out there.
Get out in rural areas and nothing.
We can get solar section. I can't bring this up when I'm in the house. With the downwind.
Look, it's your music.
Don't worry about it, see the subtitles, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna tell you, but I just decided to let you talk.
Uh, thanks. Um, that pretty much explains, uh, the, the plan in a nutshell, and if you go to this link, I mean, I would really, I, I would really, um, encourage all of you to submit comments. Um, they're really looking to have a lot, and then, you know, tell your friends or whatever. Um, because there, there's concepts here. Um, you know, some of them do only affect, uh, the unincorporated counties, but a lot of them do affect all, all properties in the county. Um, and I'm not really gonna go through this matrix one by one, but basically, uh, I'll just explain what's going on in this picture here, which is that there are five committees, and then there's a coordinating committee, and that coordinating committee, uh, required a sixty-seven percent approval for things, uh, for these, each of these things to go to, go into the plan. So, if in the coordinating committee column, there's less than sixty-seven percent, it's not gonna be included in the plan. So you can see in this, uh, questions column, all of the issues that they talked about, and what's going in the plan versus what's not. Um, so things like the cluster allowances, that flexibility for where water and sewer is present, um, school signing requirements that, you know, um, they talked about in the video. Transition zones for donut areas, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, the idea that in transition zones, the county would not, um, consider any upzoning, which is like a rezoning that would increase, uh, the intensity in the areas that are completely surrounded by a municipality. Um, and, um, so well testing on existing homes didn't pass because the citizens thought that would be a little too intrusive, but, uh, well, uh, in well testing on new homes did pass. Um, so anyway, this is the final draft, it's not a, if I say passed, I mean, what got included in the final plan. Uh, so is there any questions so far? Okay, um, we've seen some, some, and nine, no, okay. So we'll talk about map. This is their future land use map. Uh, it's kind of difficult for me to do, and I'm, okay, so, in this legend here, uh, we'll see that we're, um, we're on the left over here. Um, and so the green areas are, are what they call zones, and Marvin and Weddington were kind of griping that we didn't really get any transition zones, uh, that much. Um, but I think that's kind of the opportunity for, you know, us to, us, I say, Marvin, uh, and Weddington residents to, you know, provide comments. Um, you know, there's, there's been a lot of, uh, comments, you know, people say, how can you allow townhomes in Marvin? Uh, well, that was in the county. Um, you know, so the, this is, this is really the area to look at. This future land use map is not, it's not that, you know, you guys worked, we worked on our future land use map. So it's not that those properties would be rezoned to this when the comprehensive plan passes, but rather that when rezonings are, um, you know, submitted to the county, they would refer to this map and say, okay, in the green zone, you're not allowed to have a rezoning unless you ask the municipality. If it's in the yellow, they'll consider up to, um, one unit per acre, but if there's water and sewer, then they would consider two units greater in the yellow zone. And the orange zones, um, sorry, the, like, the orangy orange zones are where they would consider higher density residential. And this is kind of where, you know, this is a comment, and see, I'm picking one. So higher density residential, you know, the county's considering that, um, in these two locations from problem to problem, and then finding that these, uh, neighborhood centers, uh, this community center is obviously already built, and then this neighborhood center here, um, is mostly built well. Um, but they're, they're basically economic centers for commercial activities. And, um, in other areas, they have really large commu-, uh, community centers, and this economic, uh, quarters, where they think that they'll have commercial all along seventy-five, all along seventy-four, and that, you know, that would be, um, for them. Uh, um, but to their future land use map, final draft, um, any questions on this?
Just, just...
I don't know, it looks, looks interesting. I think you're right, we need to probably spend some time on it ourselves.
I, I have a question about the historical. Why is this so broken up, like?
Um, because the gray areas are the municipalities, and the county does not have development regulations in the municipality.
Those are the donut holes you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just surprised that the municipalities don't not only have control over those, like, yellow areas, but they, they aren't in the municipalities. Like, it's just so...
And annexation is mostly voluntary, now the state stripped the way municipalities power to really effectively annex. And, uh, and E T J's are regulated by the county, and we don't have any.
Right, so every colored area that you see on this map is in the county, unincorporated county. Um, and so, you know, the Marvin is over here, uh, this is Weddington. I hope you can see my mouse, otherwise what I'm saying doesn't make sense. There's Waxaw over here, Wesley Chapel is the gray area over here, and that's why, you know, there's been, there's this donut hole in Wesley Chapel, and the county's willing to give them that kind of district though. Um, but we really don't have that much of donut holes, which is why when I, you know, when I presented that idea of E T J, you know, consisting of our entire annexation area, it didn't really make sense, uh, 'cause a lot of that was developed, it's not really a donut hole. So, things like the county wasn't gonna be willing to give us that anyway, um, as a transition zone, but that doesn't mean that you don't, you know, you feedback if that's what you want. Um, because I think, uh, the Weddington, uh, folks are really, um, pushing to, uh, uh, get people to leave feedback that they want transition zones in, uh, a lot of the areas that are yellow right now because, uh, you know, people aren't really interested in seeing that, uh, that two units greater, um, adjacent to them. Um, and this, uh, you know, these high, higher density residential areas, I don't really find, um, but, uh, they don't, the Weddington folks are really not, not happy about that either. Um, anyways, that's, that's really why, um, it's important that, you know, I'm presenting. I'm just gonna beat them up, uh, we, you know, up.
Rohit, we can't hear you again.
Okay, okay, sorry. I keep, I keep like leaning away from my computer and forgetting that, just keep reminding me, sorry.
Oh, I will. You're fine, you're fine.
Okay, um, so here's the plan, and this is fourth tab. Uh, it's, it's this link right here, I'm not gonna click here right now, but, you know, you can read the whole plan right here. Then finally, it's a real simple, uh, feedback form, uh, um, that, uh, that you can provide your info, what do you like, what do you not like, uh, kind of deal. Um,
It's in the...
So that's, that's it. Um, there, uh, for comment period again, ends this week, so, uh, don't miss your opportunity, and, uh, you know, tell a friend. They're really hoping that they get, even if it's negative comments, like, people are upset about things, they want more feedback because that makes for a better plan. So, um, that's all I have. Um, that's, that's a lot to digest in a short amount of time, but is there any questions about that?
None for me, I'll just get over you, Rohit.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
So where was that map again, in, on the website?
Uh, 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 um, you click that link.
Yeah.
That was intended. Click the link, and then there's click here to learn more and provide feedback on the draft plan. I'm, I'm highlighting it.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Yep. That's a link. Thank you here.
All right, any other comments, questions for Rohit? All right, any other comments, questions for Rohit? All right. Review action items. Do we even have any?
I really don't think we do. Rohit, do you have anything?
Um, no, uh, I guess this might be the opportunity to follow back up. You know, last time we talked about form-based code, I really want again to come back with like some really clear, um, drawings. Uh, so I don't have anything for you today, but I hope to have all of that, you know, in conjunction with, you know, the visualizations of the densities. I think that's kind of like a, kind of knocked two birds out in one stone effort there. So I'll, I'll hope to have that at a subsequent meeting.
Uh, drawings of, of, uh, form-based code planning?
Yeah, yeah. Form-based code would be the idea that, uh, that would regulate largely and only really by the, the look. Um, and, and so it has to be really clear to people, you know, we don't officially call out a density, but we do de facto regulate the densities by allowing a certain building size and a certain setback that limit the amount of, you know...
Density.
...square footage that probably to have. Um, of course, uh, I think it was Michael, uh, that mentioned at the last meeting that Marvin Gardens is kind of an example of a form-based code. Um, but it's not officially a form-based code. It's just kind of some sort of hybrid. And we might be doing something like that too. Um, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. I think we're done with that. Um, so it's some sort of hybrid, uh, that Marvin Gardens was, and it did result in a very specific, uh, look that we decided in the beginning. And I have the architectural plans in my office, and when it was still a wooded site, and that's exactly what got built. So that's really kind of what form-based code accomplishes. Um, and so I just really want to have some, you know, some sort of preliminary drawings so you can really see what, you know, a form-based code would look like.
Cool.
And when did you say you wanted to have that by Rohit?
Um, I'll just say, I, I don't really have a deadline for that. I'll, I'll just say at a subsequent meeting because, uh, it is a lot of work and I really, really do want to do it. Um, and I'm going to be getting a planning assistant soon, like I did mention last time. So, um, let's, I mean, it might be January, it might be February, so let's, let's, let's keep it under radars coming at a future meeting.
All right, board member comments. Uh, Mark Peterson?
Uh, none for me. Thank you.
Melinda?
None for me. We'll see y'all in 2021. Fingers crossed that the world steps it up. Here's, here's hoping to next year.
John, are you feeling okay? Comments from you?
I'm, I'm here, and I appreciate you taking over. Um, and I, I'm, today is, is one week from surgery. And compared to the, to the first surgery, I'm amazed at, uh, quote, well I'm doing. I'm not ready to get out and get in the race car or anything else, but, you know, you know, I'm doing. Matter of fact, I don't have any walking aids. When I'm out about, I carry a cane with me just for a visual for everybody around me, but I'm walking without anything.
You got, you got a sore in that.
Well, pain I have is, is incision pain, so, I mean, I'm real happy. And hopefully I can get my, my mental part back by next month.
Let me know, let me know how you do that, because I'd like mine as well. So, uh, well, we're glad that you are, uh, we're glad that you're healing up and doing well, and we expect you back in January. I'll be on the other side of the, of the table. All right, Kent?
Uh, nothing for me.
And Michael. Mr. Lavell?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, wish everybody a happy holiday. Be safe if you're traveling and, uh, enjoy your families, and we'll see you next year.
All right, um, can I get a motion to...
Do you have any comments?
Oh, no, I don't have. I'm just glad, um, I'm glad John's doing well. And, uh, I also wish everyone a healthy holiday. If you're traveling, just wear your mask. Um, all right, motion to adjourn the meeting?
At 8:28.
At 8:28. No, 8:29.
There you go. Mark can have it. I'll second it.
All right. All in favor? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.